Go ahead and call this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Tyler Independent School District to order. We do have a presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Do we have anybody for public participation?
No, sir.
No public participants. Okay, well then we'll jump right in. We have the Tyler ISD Foundation Annual Report. That's Betsy Jones.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. For those of you that I haven't met, my name is Betsy Jones and I'm the Executive Director of the Foundation. I look forward to meeting you all soon. First off, I would just say we've had another great year with the Foundation and we're so thankful for y'all's support and strong partnership with us. It's been a great year, a unique ending, but a great year. And so I just have some general information I'm going to share about our programs, activities, and financials, and we'll entertain questions at any time. So if you all will look at the next slide that's titled Tyler ISD Foundation. Oh, I get to click it. Okay. There, okay. So I know that most of you all are very familiar with the work of the Foundation, but we are an independent nonprofit corporation that is focused on supporting quality education in the district. And our mission is to provide resources to inspire learning, to enrich teaching, and to enhance opportunities for district students. But you can really kind of boil the work of the Foundation down to we seek funds in order to grant those funds in meaningful and impactful ways. And so you can see here, the yellow boxes are the ways that we typically seek funds. We host an annual campaign each year that targets individual donors and corporate sponsors. We have an employee giving campaign each year that allows TISD employees to participate through a payroll deduction or one-time gift. We write grants. We have several endowment funds that produce distributions. And then we also typically have a special campaign or event, and this year it was the Brick Campaign. And then the way that we typically try to positively impact the district are through the green boxes over there. So support for TISD events and programs, things like convocation, teacher retirement, and teacher of the year. We manage several scholarships for graduating seniors. We host an event called Night of Shining Stars, which I'm going to tell you guys a little bit more about later, but that honors our top graduates and distinguished educators. And then we also offer professional development and emergency grants. And then the heart of our work is really the Grants for Great Ideas, which allow funding for classroom and campus grants for our teachers. Okay, so moving on then to our actual results for this year. Now, just to start with, our, these are all as of May 31st. Our fiscal year ends when y'all does, at the end of August, so we still will have some movement, but this is where we are now. And just to start, just to kind of share with you guys, as far as COVID-19 impacts go, we were very fortunate because the vast majority of our fundraising occurs in the fall, and so we had concluded the vast majority of our campaigns. The spring is when we typically expend most of our funds, and we were still able to do that. The primary impact for us was the fact that we were not able to gather together for Night of Shining Stars, but instead we're able to honor and recognize those students and educators in many of the same ways that we did, just not actually physically together. So that's kind of from a COVID-19 impact. But from a revenue perspective, currently we have just under $300,000 in revenue. That is an increase of over 25% over last year, which we're very thankful for. The primary sources for that increase are an increase in TISD employee giving. We are up about 30% in the total amount pledged this year. And what's interesting is that fewer employees participated this year, about 50 fewer, but those that did participate participated at a higher level, which was wonderful. So in the past, we've had a lot of employees participate with a $1 one-time gift, which is great and we love, but it's also been nice to have some employees really support the Foundation at an even higher level. We also had some increased grant awards. We were awarded a Women's Fund of Smith County grant for over $60,000 for the Caldwell Ceramics Lab, and we were given a $10,000 grant from the Herd Foundation to support COVID-19 family and student need efforts. So that was good as well. And then the last primary increase was our Brick Campaign has been quite successful. We've hosted three rounds over the past 18 months. And this year that produced over $33,000, and then last fiscal year, just under $30,000. We were able to increase the number of our corporate sponsors and individual donors, which is always one of our goals. We want to have as wide a support net as possible within the community. And then the last thing that I'll say about revenue is just that we are on a two-year funding cycle. So all of the unrestricted funding that we raise in this fiscal year serves as our operational budget for next year, which provides great stability for us. It allows for us to plan just how much we have available for grants and things like that. So we're not trying to raise and spend funds within the same fiscal year. Okay, the next slide here, Gifts to Tyler ISD. That's primarily how we spend our money is in gifts to TISD. And so so far this year, we've given over $172,000 to the district. That's the highest amount in over 10 years, so we're so thankful to be able to do that. Just delving in a little bit deeper into some of those programs, Grants for Great Ideas. We had the highest number of applications we've ever received, so 68 grant applications this year, which we were so excited about. And then we were able to actually fund the highest number and amount that we've ever done as well. So we funded 38 grants for over $80,000. We also, the Foundation has two endowment funds that benefit TISD Fine Arts specifically. And so this year, we partnered with Tyler ISD Visual and Performing Arts to include Fine Arts grants in our process, and which was great because it really allowed for equitable distribution of those funds across campuses. So that has been really nice. From a scholarship perspective, we, this is the first year we've ever sponsored a Team One Tyler Scholarship, so we got to sponsor a faculty member from John Tyler, which was wonderful. We awarded nine student scholarships, and this year we awarded our first ever Apprenticeship Scholarship. So Stiles Electric offered an electrician apprenticeship. One of the students is a part of that program, and so we did a scholarship for him to purchase some tools and equipment that he needed for that apprenticeship program. We also started the Tyler ISD Shout-Out Program, which allowed for recognition of teachers and staff during our distance learning, and we provided them with a gift card from a local business or restaurant to try to help everybody out there. And then we were still able to do our Night of Shining Stars recognition, which I brought you all the program from it because it is a great thing to look through if you're having a tough day in education because it, there's amazing students and amazing educators, and to be able to read about the impact that they each have on one another is really inspirational. Okay, the last page here is just a financial snapshot for the past five years, so you all can kind of see where we are and where we've been. We're in a very strong position. Our investments have taken some recent hits, but that is okay because those are long-term holdings, and we will still be able to take the distributions that we have planned for the coming fiscal year, even in their current state. And the other thing that I'll say is that our bylaws require us to have certain percentages in activities that benefit Tyler ISD versus long-term planning versus our payroll and operations. And we are well within those ranges, and so the health of the Foundation is strong and things are looking really good. So our board will meet next week to do our final planning for the upcoming school year, to set our giving priorities and fundraising goals and all of that kind of good stuff. So everything is good with the Foundation. May I answer any questions from you guys?
Just a refresher, when was the Tyler ISD Foundation founded?
1990.
That was 1990?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we were really one of the very first educational foundations in Texas. It was kind of, and it's gone through different iterations. It was a part of the district at its beginning, and then it broke away into its own independent corporation shortly after.
Yeah.
Okay.
Different iterations. I love that.
We'll just say that, right? Peaks and valleys along the way. But I'm going to pass out the Night of Shining Stars programs, and I also brought a couple Grants for Great Ideas brochures for you all just so you could see. I don't think you were on my mailing list at that time, so I'll give you those as well. But as always, we're here for, you know, questions, and we're here to support and benefit you guys, so please just let me know how we can help.
Don't leave yet.
Oh.
I have just one thing to say and then a question for you. This is a great example of the importance of leadership, and you have done a phenomenal job over the last couple of years pulling the Foundation out of a financial ditch and a leadership ditch. And so I've served on the Foundation Board as the ex-officio rep for the school board for the last couple of years. It's been fun to watch you take charge and really improve the level of performance and then the contribution to TISD. It's been good.
Well, thank you.
The board also is a good board in that it holds you accountable and there's a clear scorecard. And so there's one, one part of every meeting is we review the scorecard for Betsy on how Betsy is doing. And one of her metrics is the percentage of trustees that contribute to the Foundation.
That is true.
And so I was just, I don't know, I know you've been working on this. I don't know where we are today, but could you let this board know how you're doing on your metric to make sure we all contribute to the Foundation?
Yes, so we are currently at 58% of trustee school board giving. Now, there's been obviously some changes in the school board this year, but yes, we would welcome your contribution and support in any amount so that we could report 100% support by our district's leadership. So thank you guys very much. Thank you, Fred. There have been personal notes and emails and things. I try to be a soft asker. Yes, we would love your support.
Well, we appreciate the partnership, and you guys do so much for the district. It's definitely a unique partnership that we hold dear to our hearts. All right. Thanks again for the presentation. Okay, I think we have the return of the Shack right here, Shack Committee, Student Health Advisory Council Committee Annual Report.
Hello, Lord, Dr. Crawford and President Washman. I'm Rachel Barber, the Director of Health Services, presenting on the annual Shack presentation. This year, our Shack had a reorganization amongst their board, and so they had elected a brand-new president, Amber Payne. She is a mother of a student at Hubbard this year, and she had a lot of great ideas getting started. Just kind of had to feel it out and learn the ways of Shack and the rules and whatnot. So she was working really hard on getting new organization, working with Danny Price, the past president and current vice president, on ways to come up with different ideas for the school. So, let's see if I can move this forward maybe. There we go. So they developed a partnership with the Tyler ISD PTA Council, and they did go to that meeting so that they could hopefully get parent participation from each campus this year. That has really been a struggle in the last several years with having parents actually come to the Shack meetings on a regular basis. We've had a lot of community support, but just the parent support hasn't been there. So they did go to that PTA Council meeting, and they had worked out with the presidents of each campus PTA to send a couple parent volunteers. That had started out, it started to happen, and then COVID happened. So we didn't get to have our last two meetings. The other issues that they were interested in dealing with this year were suicide awareness, mental health. They were very on board with the anti-vaping campaign that we had in the fall, and were really wanting to help with that. And then bullying and cyberbullying. Several of our parents that are involved in Shack actually had personal experience with their children being bullied, and so that was something that was very near and dear to their hearts, and they wanted to kind of take that on. So in our February meeting before we had left for screen break, they had actually voted to make cyberbullying and bullying their topic of interest for the year. It was a little bit late getting started on that, but they were really wanting to take that and come up with different projects and ideas for the campuses. And so they didn't get the opportunity to do that, so they're hoping to come back full force next fall. And that's all we've got from Shack, unfortunately, since they had a short season. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I think you clearly stated everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, moving on to our action items, A through G. Did anybody want to pull any specific one of these to talk about?
We've got to vote on all of them individually.
Individually.
Not consent.
All right, good deal. Thank you. Well, first, we have the Consider Approval of the Resolution and Master Interlocal Agreement with Region 11 Education Service Center.
Yeah, Mr. Washman, we've got an interlocal agreement with Region 11 for some professional development. Dr. Hanson, if you want to just address that from your seat maybe?
They're going to, they have a proprietary training for blended learning, which will go along with some of the Canvas and the Distance Learning pieces that we're working on.
Yeah, the integration that we're putting in place, you know, it spurred us to do it because of the break that we've been on from traditional setting. Region 11's got some opportunities. Is it Canvas?
Right, they integrate with Canvas, but yeah, the blended learning means inside the classroom or outside.
Right, yeah. And we do not have that in our local service center, this PD from our local service center. So we've reached out to the Region 11, based out of Fort Worth. And we've done this before. We've used Region 10 before. We've used Region 4, which is, Region 10's Dallas, Region 4 is Austin. You know, all these service centers have proprietary functions. They specialize in certain things, even Region 12 does out of Waco. So I don't remember which one, what they do that's unique to their service center only, but they kind of all spread it out. And so we're asking the board to approve this professional development opportunity with Region 11.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this interlocal agreement as submitted by the superintendent.
All right, thank you, Reverend Haver. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Moving on to item B, which is Approval of Competitive Sealed Proposals for Lighting at High School Outdoor Athletic Facilities.
Yeah, we're excited about this. We're going to let Mr. Loper come up to the podium to address this, but you know, we're getting towards the back end of getting all of our procurement done for the, for the high schools as far as the new construction goes. This lighting package actually addresses the lighting packages for the athletic facilities. Mr. Loper?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. As the board agenda says, when we were developing our guaranteed maximum price way back two and a half, almost three years ago, we actually had VE'd value engineered the lighting out of these, both these projects. And we've now are available to do this, so we, we'd sent out some competitive seal proposals, sorry, to the contractors listed and got some very good pricing in, very good pricing, as a matter of fact. So this will actually light the 100-yard soccer field, practice fields at both high schools, the baseball fields at both high schools, the softball fields at both high schools, and the tennis courts at both high schools. So we're very pleased, and this will, I know this will give us a lot of flexibility as far as our, all of our sports go. And so we've retained, we actually put out plans and retained Thompson Architects who put this bid documents together for us. And as you can see, they, we're going to, we're recommending Phil Green Electrical Services, who is actually the contractor that's doing our middle schools right now for those lighting projects. So they scored out very good, and we're pleased to bring this to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Loper. Does anybody on the board have any questions about this particular agenda item? I will say I'm excited to see, you know, driving down whichever the part of the loop I'm on, kids playing and activity going on at both of those campuses under those lights. You know, it's just, it's a good sight, you know, far, far from the site we have currently and have had for the last few decades. So, okay, may I entertain a motion on item B?
I move that we approve entering in the contact, contract with Pilgreen for outdoor lighting at both high schools.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, moving on to item C, we have Consider the Approval of Replacement Synthetic Playing Services at Christus Trinity Francis, I'm sorry, Mother Francis Rose Stadium. So, yeah, we were out there last night and this morning and see some nutgrass growing up through the, through the chewed-up tire rubber, and so it does appear that we do need, need to address that issue.
Well, we've got some, it's actually, it's last year of warranty. That warranty expires here in three months, I believe. Is that correct? So the playing has been through the actual lifespan of the product, the, the actual fibers in the, in the, the plank surface are actually failing to where there are some, it shouldn't happen this way, but there's actually some places to where there's just rubber and no fiber in there. You know, not sure what the financial forecast looks like in the future, but we do have the available funds to be able to do it now. And so we wanted to, wanted to bring it in front of the board to actually do that. We've actually provided Helus as the recommendation for y'all to do that. They've done good work here in East Texas, and they've also done pretty good work at Cowboy Stadium, NRG? NRG and Baylor as well. So they're reputable, and I'm excited about putting our kids on a new, new surface if y'all approve this.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions or comments about this agenda item?
I do have a question. I don't know whether you can answer this, Dr. Crawford, whether Mr. Loper's going to need to weigh in. So the way this is written, Helus, the total is 666, 520, plus an owner's contingency of 25,000. So my first question is just apple, want to make sure this is apples to apples. Had we gone with paragon, there would have been an additional 25,000 added to that bid as well. I'm just trying to figure out how far the gap is between the two. I want to make sure that it's...
Yeah, the gap, the gap's 14,000. It's under your separate cover, agenda item there. Helus is not low bid, but as far as actually going and visiting the surfaces, actually doing some checking with folks that have been using either one of them, we landed on Helus. But yes, the $25,000, we added that in there ourselves as an owner's contingency, just in case.
Okay, so whenever we don't take the low bid, I'm not saying we always have to, I always like hearing why we would choose somebody who is, is more expensive. So it's service and reputation were the variables in that?
That's correct. We, Mike Carter Field does have a Helus product on it, as do our middle schools. And we've had, you know, since those, actually we're about to be in, we completed year five or been on, we've completed five years. Athlete Department has been impressed with the responsiveness of any type of repairs or service that they needed at those facilities. We were a little concerned about the field at, at Rose Stadium, the Shaw product is what they call it. Those fibers tend to have laid down on the fields that we visited, whereas the Helus fibers continue to stand up. We felt like that the, the way they've engineered their materials and their product is worth the $14,000 difference in the two projects.
Okay, thank you.
Along with the reputable stuff, calling around, talking to coaches and ADs and superintendents about why they chose that product as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for, on item C. Item C. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it and the motion carries. Moving on to item D, we have Approval of a Change Order to WRL for the addition of a synthetic playing surfaces for outdoor fields at Lee and additional tennis courts and outdoor fields at John Tyler.
I'll introduce this, Mr. Loper, before you start talking about the technical pieces of it. This also was something that, that we value engineered out early on in the process. We did alternate bids because we didn't know at that time if the budget was going to support it. So we did go with grass fields at, at our baseball and softball facilities. We also pulled out the two additional tennis courts at John Tyler. To host a tournament, you need six tennis courts. We haven't been living with that for years at either one of our high schools. Y'all addressed the lighting. We haven't been living with that for years at both of our high schools. And don't get me started on our softball facilities. As the daddy of a, of a girl athlete, I can't believe we haven't had issues with that. But this opportunity here allows us to put our student athletes in position to have practice facilities and some sub varsity game facilities that's on the same level as their peers in 5A and 6A. So after addressing it that way, we were very excited to be able to afford this, and we're doing it through a, a change in the guaranteed maximum price with WRL. Mr. Loper, I'll let you take it away from there.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Crawford, again. We're very pleased to be able to do this. In, in all actuality, we actually bid way back two and a half years ago, but today, these prices even came in better than they did two and a half years ago, which is almost to the tune of a million dollars or a million plus. So WRL did, we requested them put out a scope of work and to also solicit these proposals. We reviewed all the proposals with them, and I can tell you that, you may ask, so what contractor or what product are they going to use? They're going to use Helus, so we'll have Helus products throughout the district, almost. And I might add to, part of the, part of the reason, Mr. Hager, that you, that you asked what the difference is, another difference that's a little more technical in that Helus product is their monofilament fiber that they use and the chemical that they use that also helps outperform beyond anybody else's as far as the UV rays go, get to the, and that's what's breaking down the actual field at, at Rose Stadium right now. So yes, this will, this will put turf, all synthetic playing surface on all of the fields, baseball, softball, and the practice fields at both campuses, and add their tennis courts back in.
Six tennis courts at both locations. Y'all know my background. I'm an old baseball guy, and baseball guys like grass. Not a big fan of turf unless it means more to us as far as maintenance goes. It'd be, it's, it's difficult for us to, for school systems to take care of quality grass playing surfaces. And I think that we probably figured that out a long time ago. You can protect those surfaces, but with the amount of usage that our fields get, and we don't really have our, you know, our community can get on these fields quite a bit as well. If you had grass fields, it'd be very difficult to, to maintain those, so without locking it all up. So that's why we've gone the synthetic surface route the last 20 years here in Tyler ISD. I think Rose Stadium, this is on its third or fourth replacement?
This will be the third.
This is the third replacement. 2001, I think, was the first year, I believe, so we're about 20 years past that. So that's why we've gone, if you wonder why we're doing so much synthetic, that's why. It's just, we've got a lot of traffic on it, not just our students. If we could just say only for games only, then I think that we could probably say we could take care of a grass field, but it's pretty difficult to do that otherwise.
Okay, I think Mr. Burkfield has a question.
Just on timing, Rose Stadium, what's your timing there, and are we going to run into the first game? Just on timing, um, Rose Stadium, what's your timing there and are we gonna run into the first game?
The, the contract that's under separate cover that Mr. Watchman has to sign has a start date of Monday and done by August one. Now, I look for them to actually beat that, that schedule, since you don't have to put gravel in and drainage system and all that, so.
All right. And then, um, as far as the high schools go, can you remind us timeline wise where we are?
Yeah, we'll be next summer at John Tyler. And, uh, we'll be probably starting our excavation here at Robert E. Lee in September, this September.
Okay. And you need to finish all your demolition before you do these projects?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, three years ago, when we started this process, Mr. Burkfield, this is when you were kind of looking at me going, why in the world are we, is it gonna take until August of twenty-one to wrap all this up? This is kind of the schedule of everything that, that you're starting, we finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's a very tiny light at the end of the tunnel, that a year from now, we should be able to effectively cut the ribbon, shoot the fireworks off and everything else with this entire project.
And I might add that, uh, of course Greg Priest and his team and all our coaches at both campuses have been very helpful. I mean, they've sacrificed a lot over the last few years, uh, um, not having a baseball field or softball field and, and...
Not having gyms?
Yeah, and we're soon almost gonna be down on one gym and no gym for a short period, so. It's been, uh, challenging for all. Just one point of clarification, I think I know the answer to this. The, these funds come from bond proceeds savings in our overall project? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item D.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Uh, we got a few left. Moving on to item E. Consider approval of teacher devices for effective delivery of instructional technology.
One thing we've known, but was exacerbated by the, this, this, uh, asynchronous delivery of instruction over the last three months is our, uh, our teacher devices throughout our, um, school system, at least the portable ones, we start talking about laptops or tablets, have been fairly antiquated over time. Technology has probably hounded us for the last six years, Tasha, about replacement of that. We feel that giving our teachers the right tools to provide instruction to our students is important, whether they're in person or they're doing it via distance learning. What you have in front of you is a, is a modernization and upgrade of the actual instructional, uh, technology, at least as devices go, um, that, that are portable. We do still have through our virtual desktop, desktop, what's the I stand for that? Infrastructure, VDI. Uh, we do have desktops. But these are actually the ones that they can take home with them, um, use as far as the classrooms go as well. One exciting thing to talk about the high schools is when you start talking about some of the technology that's on here is gonna help be how interactive they are with the interactive televisions that we've, uh, that we've purchased and placed inside of all of our high schools, where actually you're working on something and it throws it up to the, to the, to the board automatically. So, um, certainly this is something, uh, that I think can help us if we have to do any type of distance learning. We're anticipating that we're gonna have to do some of that in the fall. Regardless of, uh, of whether or not there's still a, a lockdown, we think that integrating folks back into the, to the normal school setting is still gonna be a little apprehensive for some, not a whole lot. We, we realize that here in Smith County. But at the same time, we want to be prepared for that. We think that this is, uh, this agenda, uh, uh, item addresses that by providing the right devices in teacher's hands.
I'm sure you know the answer to this, or Joseph does, um, but I, I have to ask it. You know, whenever we use Apple products and we are syncing them with other products, uh, from time to time, I know that, uh, they don't always speak the same language. I'm sure we took that into consideration. And with the other systems we're implementing, so that, you know, when somebody wants to do something, uh, on their iPad air, that we don't have any, uh, problems, uh, with those, our, all the systems we're kind of starting to integrate and blend and everything like that. We think that'll be a pretty seamless effort.
Should be a very seamless effort. We have a computer on file with it. We use manage all of our iPads, so we're able to push updates and software that people want on them and also control them in a way that still allows teachers and staff to put other apps on there, but still it is something that's, these rules, it's called probably pull it back off the portfolio and manage all of them. These iPads also give our teachers the ability to connect to their virtual desktops. It's the same computer they have in their classroom. They can access them on their iPad, access the laptop, or also use the camera for video conferencing and go build it in the classroom. So show physical, because it's not a perfect...
All right. Well, I'm sure it will be, and I just had to ask, because it crossed my mind.
It's a good question, because if you've had an Apple device, trying to interact with our network, sometimes it hadn't been great. Now, I'll tell you where it hadn't been great has been social media, and that's not a bad problem to have when you're talking about the district's network. So if you jump on the district's network, I asked them to open up Twitter a couple of years ago, and they did, and we were having issues. So they've shut it down. So, yeah, we can't get on to Instagram, we can't get on to Facebook, and you can't get on to Twitter. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that ain't a bad thing. Excuse me, that ain't, that's not right. That's Atkins, the former English teacher over there. That isn't a bad thing. So, I know. Um, so I, I think that that's really where we probably struggle more than any time. Yeah, there's some, there's always some struggles depending upon what you've got. So, um, the great thing is, you know, as far as the video conferencing, it's been gonna be able to happen, um, the recording goes up. They can't, I, I turned them loose and said, go find the devices. And that's what they came back with for the teacher instruction.
Good deal. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item E.
I move that we approve item E.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Uh, okay, we're moving on to item F, which is consider approval of CTE teacher devices for effective delivery of instructional technology.
This is the same strategy. This is just being, um, procured out of the, uh, CTE funding as opposed to, uh, general funding.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this one? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item F.
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And, uh, moving on to our, our last action item here is consider approval of one-on-one student devices for effective learning technology.
Same premise here, except from the student end this time. Um, one thing that we were really concerned about when we went to this, hybrid model that we threw together was, we didn't have enough technology to deploy. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'd been oppositional to that, um, during my career on the one-to-one. But I think now this, this, it probably emphasizes it more to me, and, you know, we all change on how we feel. But, uh, this was an opportunity for us to, to ensure some equity throughout the school system as far as technology goes. Every, you know, every kid having a device is not just gonna be a benefit if we go through this asynchronous and hybrid type of, uh, delivery of instruction or learning for our students. We're gonna be able to use this in the classroom. We, we, we're, my staff is excited. When I say my staff, I'm talking about all twenty-five hundred folks that are, that are beneath me in the org chart are excited about this opportunity, because they're gonna be able to do things inside their classroom that they haven't been able to do. Students are gonna be able to take their learning home with them better than they ever have, all in one device. We've got great strategies and plans that'll be in place by the time we get back to school in regard to effective use, usage of this. Um, but more excitingly is, if you don't have internet access at home, then that park and learn, and I've gotta come up with a better terminology than that, that we're proposing, um, will, will certainly pay dividends to us as we go forward. Mainly because we were worried about grades and feedback of learning. It was hard to do that when we were handing out packets. You know, ARP and smaller school systems were able to deliver those packets. I think they went all packets. And then they're actually get those packets back and graded. It's gonna be difficult for us to do that for eighteen thousand students. So this is our strategy to, uh, to go forward. But yeah, I think once we get past this, we're gonna be better than we are now, because every student's gonna have a device in their hand. Uh, it's exciting, uh, to, 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 uh, bring this in front of y'all today.
Good deal. Anybody have any comments or questions on this particular item?
Question regarding the, will there be agreement between the district and the parents in regards to responsible for this?
Yes, sir. Um, we, there's, the great thing about this, and it's already been out there for fifteen years, these one-to-one initiatives, is that there's models out there that we can actually replicate that says that there are agreements. They actually have some, this small fee, uh, minimum fees that could be attached to that, depending upon socioeconomic status, uh, depending on what that fee could be. But yes, sir, an agreement between the, the parents and et cetera, to the point to where if you graduate from a Tyler ISD high school and you've lost or damaged or done whatever, and you haven't been responsible for that, um, may not let you walk. So I mean, there, there's some pretty draconian things that could, could be, develop through that agreement. But yes, sir, we're not just gonna pass these out and, and say that, hope, hope you see them next year.
And the parents have to agree to this, or, because I can see some parents not agreeing to it. So what happens to the student and availability of the unit for the student?
Well, that's the, that's the thing that we need to do a good job of explaining to the parents, that this is, this is part of their, um, instructional arsenal, uh, the toolbox, the, uh, you know, textbooks. Um, you know, everybody was, in the old, in the old days, or even when I was still in high school, even when I was still a principal, you know, we were handing out textbooks that were that thick and they were putting them in their backpacks and you're having to lug them around everywhere. This, that's kind of gonna replace that. So I think that as you, as you move into a modernization of your school system and your instructional delivery, uh, we'll communicate that out to parents to say that that's something that we need to go ahead and do. And again, there's always gonna be this opportunity to work with parents on the fee associated with it, if we get to that point.
Are these checked out by year? Are they checked out, I think you mentioned last meeting or whenever that it was based on, um, like, if a family had one or two devices at home, their kid didn't get one?
That's what we did. That's what we did whenever we had this issue. We're gonna have some opportunities to flesh some of that out as far as opting out, if you want one or not, if you have something at home that'll take care of it. Because ultimately, the student is gonna be responsible for the learning that's going on. So AJ Crawford has her Chromebook at home. Um, as long as it's compatible with what we're doing, I may not take one of those. But we did run into these situations to where families that had means were saying that we've only got two computers in our entire home. We got four kids. So this is gonna be something that we'll have here. So, yes, sir, you're not gonna be required to get it, our stuff, as long as you have the capability to get on and access our technology on the LMS. And our LMS canvas is accessible from any device, I'm, I'm assuming. So, yes, sir, we will, we will...
So we've given nine thousand units for our eighteen thousand kids, and y'all will figure out how that's... Okay.
Yeah, we realize that we may not give out eighteen thousand, uh, Chromebooks, but you do have to have some inventory in case they don't work, and in case they get damaged, in case they're lost. We do have, as part of our agreement with the company that we're using, there are things built in there for that. Um, when we check them out, we check them back in, it's much like reconditioning football helmets and shoulder pads. When we get those back in, they'll actually take them back to the, to the company, correct, Joseph? Wipe them down, clean them, do all the repairs and work that needs to happen. So it's a pretty good concept.
And that's at the end of the school year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But during the year, if there's something going on with the device, we all have technology that sometimes fouls up. Um, we're able to check that in with one of the librarians at the school, MTS is what we call them, Media Technology Specialist. Um, and then they'll be able to check, barcode that back in, and then hand you a new one, and then we'll ship that one off to get repaired or, or, uh, or cleaned or whatever we need to have.
Thank you.
So each campus will manage the issuing of the computers?
Sure, the, the district's technology department, obviously, when we receive those, we'll, we'll barcode everything as far as that goes. Well, I'm sorry, Tasha, you're telling them wrong.
The company will take the amount we say, they'll have all fixed up, and they will take, like, say, Rouse needs six hundred units. They will deliver the six hundred units to Rouse. We don't.
Good, okay, taking us out of the mix, okay. But the barcodes are what?
That's what the MTA, the assistant or the specialist...
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item G.
I move that item G be approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, I will say this, this particular workshop, we've had items A through G, and I love looking back there and seeing successful student outcomes on the back of the wall and being able to look at our agenda item and see items that clearly improve and impact successful student outcomes. And, um, these are all exciting agenda items, and I'm, I'm proud to see us doing it. So, um, we'll move along to the twenty twenty-one budget update.
So Tasha's gonna come up. Do you want this microphone to sit your seat, or you wanna come up here? I think we usually make you come up to the podium. So y'all know Ms. Bjork, our CFO. She's going to, uh, provide the first look at next year's budget.
Before we get into next year's budget, I wanted to discuss nineteen twenty. Y'all have heard about the stimulus money, the Esser, E S S E R, it's Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We are gonna receive four point three million, and private schools get about five percent. So we will see, we'll actually have four million. It's not extra money, though. Our nineteen twenty money from the state will be reduced by that amount to help with all the things that have been going on. So if you've heard about this money, it's not extra. So we, there, the things that you can put in it are like these devices. So we will probably code these devices into that money, the teacher and student. And then also any summer learning projects that we have or after-school learning, we can code to this. We can go back to March thirteenth and pick up anything that relates to COVID, like masks, anything that FEMA won't reimburse us, premium pay, that type of thing, delivering packets, transportation costs. So we'll be doing that. And we have until June thirty twenty-one to spend it, but we'll spend it before then, because we're gonna try to put as much in there from this year as we can, because we're looking forward to next year's budget. So we'll probably get it all spent with things we've already spent, done this year.
Tasha, one question there. It's a dollar-for-dollar reduction in state funding for federal, or is it just a...
I'm not sure how that's gonna work. They're gonna reduce our ADA. So they're gonna apply a formula. I'm sure it's pro-rata.
That, the, the plug, that's what we're calling it.
Right.
The Edum way of saying it, it is plug. The plug, we, we didn't find out about the plug till three weeks ago?
Right, but really I think people thought this was gonna be twenty twenty-one. I just found out on May twenty-eighth that it's nineteen twenty. So that's why this...
It, it's interesting, because y'all remember, I mean, when this first started, uh, TEA came out and said, oh, y'all don't worry about funding. Yeah, we're good, just, let's just get through these three months. Yeah, we're good, just, let's just get through these three months. They didn't know about this coming, they didn't know that this was gonna happen. But I think they've been, the comptroller's office has been very opportunistic with this. I think they've seen this as a kind of a lifesaver, a lifebuoy that, that they've thrown out there that they can go ahead and plug this year's budget, which surprises me because I really thought that next year was where they would use it because now that probably puts a little bit of a flag up that they may, we may get, what do they call it? Pro, prorating, yeah. So the proration makeup, we may see a reduction this coming year, but I think we've prepared for that. Y'all, y'all are pretty aware of what we've been doing. Hope so. Yeah, hope's not a good strategy.
Right.
But we've done, we have had a strategy on this and we're gonna turn it over to Tasha, let's talk about twenty twenty-one.
Right, and I think it just dawned on me, y'all have these, right? Did I give you these? I think I gave you. Okay, I don't think I have it for the screen. But if you'll go to Revenue Sources, the second page, and then in your agenda item, let me get there. Page twenty-six, it's right there, the revenue. Can you put it on the, okay. So if you'll keep a finger on, this is our actual revenue page that's in detail and this is just a summary page. Now, what, I did this about two weeks ago, or three, actually, and some things have changed since then. We've been given some advice on how to handle some different things in the revenue estimate. And so this is very preliminary. For state funding, they suggested that we reduce our ADA a little bit and I kept it flat when I did the estimate because I'm used to doing that. But in case of sickness and that type of thing, reduce our ADA, just slightly, not a lot, so I'm gonna need to do that. Increase sub-expense, I did increase it some, but maybe not enough, so I'll be looking at that. And then also, in case we have an overabundance of property tax appeals, we may need to, we won't get our values till July twenty-fifth. I used what they'd given us at that point in time, so we'll, I'll probably adjust it down. But we're still in pretty good shape as far as that goes. So our state-funded revenue is around forty percent, last year it was thirty-nine. Local property tax revenues, fifty-eight, about the same as last year and so on. Now, if you'll turn the page. And look at page twenty-eight in the agenda while we're going over this. The state revenue increased slightly in order to take care of our property tax rate going down again. So I've got a slide on that next, but the local share is now current year. So when we, when our property values come out in July, that automatically determines the amount of money that they're gonna reduce our state funding by, whereas before it was a year lag. So now it's immediate, but we don't really know till, I won't know till February twenty twenty-one what my true reduction will be. Because it's hard to figure that out, it's almost impossible. And so it's always, you know, I try to use the same amount it increased last year, I have to do a proration, so hopefully we'll be pretty close on that. But with the state funding, it's an increase of around three point nine million. I will make some adjustments, it's gonna go down, but so far, that's what I had. If you'll turn the page and look at your next page in the packet, page twenty-seven, these are our property taxes. And our values went up about six and a half percent. And I use a collection rate of ninety-nine and a half cents. And our current tax rate is a dollar thirty-three and a half and I'm projecting it to be around a dollar two nine five eight. Although that could change too, because they have made some new rules on that and I'll try to explain it. So our eighteen, like the nineteen twenty tax rate, the compressed rate, the year we're in right now was ninety-three cents and we added four cents to it. So our M and O tax rate was ninety-seven cents on the year that we're in right now. They are compressing it down again to ninety-one point six four cents. But that can change based on your values. TEA is gonna calculate our compressed rate on Aug-, they will give it to us on August fifth. We have to publish on August seventh, so we're having a board workshop on August sixth where you'll see the new tax rate. But the maximum it can be is the ninety-one point six four cents plus our four pennies that we add on our golden pennies. And the legislature's giving us a chance this year to add an extra penny with no tax rate election. The vote has to be unanimous by the board. Everyone in attendance has to unanimously vote the penny. And then, so what I'm proposing is a re-, an increase, go ahead and add that penny and we're gonna reduce a penny on the debt service tax rate. You can tell it's thirty-six and a half down to thirty-five and a half. So we'll still lower the rate, right now almost four cents. It could be more, could be less, depending on our, how our values come out. And then right now, our compressed rate, what I've calculated is eighty-nine cents. And then the five pennies is where the ninety-four cents comes from for next year's tax rate. And I know that's all confusing, it's confusing to me, too.
You know, they rewrote the whole formula
Right.
last year in the eighty-sixth. So I think they're still struggling with trying to get us interpretations of what to do.
Right, I watched a webinar yesterday on it, so. Anyway, so that's what's gonna happen with that. So that's our local tax revenue, so maybe three million, not sure yet, increase there. And then we have some other increases and decreases in revenue and those are summarized on page twenty-eight in the agenda up at the top, but I also have them on your PowerPoint. We have, obviously, the interest income's gonna decrease a little bit or quite a bit, probably in half from what we've been used to because of the economy. Our rental income has been decreasing over the years. TRS on behalf is gonna decrease because we cut sixty-eight positions out of general fund. And then just little miscellaneous income decrease. So that was a net decrease of around almost a million dollars. So our proposed revenue increase is around six million dollars. Now, when we get to expenses, because we're uncertain about what will happen in twenty-one, twenty-two with the new legislative session, I am proposing the use of the mon-, of the funds we have in mostly one-time type expenditures. And the biggest one is a retention stop-in for employees versus a raise. Because if we are cut back in the next year and we still have to give those raises or we have to keep them in salary, then we could have to find other things to cut. And I don't know how much that'll be yet, it'll be how much of us left when we get more solid numbers.
Yeah, you know, when we talked about this after the session, about what we were gonna do as far as raising it, we, we discussed a stipend. But, you know, statewide, even us, we were all fat on the hog and went ahead and married ourselves to those increases. So I think this is a more conservative strategy to, to do that. You know, there's been a lot of school systems that have jumped out there already and adopted four percent raises. I just, with all the uncertainty that's going on, even though we don't even know if we're gonna be prorated or not next year, I think marrying to that and having the board adopt that and then going back and having to either do that or some type of riff, I just don't think that's a very methodical way of going about this. So that's why we've said that if we do anything, then it could be done in the form of a stipend. And again, that would be something that we make the decision a little bit closer to when we actually do it as opposed to announcing that we're gonna do a four percent raise. Because we don't know, the, the, the fact is, we don't know. And what she's alluding to is exactly what we did last year when we actually went ahead and put it into the salary schedule. If you, if you go ahead and do that now, then you're gonna marry yourself to that salary schedule, that pay scale after the eighty-seventh legislature and, and there's, we don't know. I mean, that, that's, that's a, that's a pretty scary thing. We know how they've reacted in the past. You look at whenever they reacted in twenty-eleven after the recession was finally over with, we wound up getting our five billion dollar cut out of public ed and that's when we had to do a lot of the things that we did. How much did we reduce back then?
I think it was around nine to ten.
Nine to ten million. So we're just trying to make sure we're doing things a little bit more methodical for y'all to consider, as opposed to just saying that we're just gonna get married to, to a salary increase because we don't know if that money's gonna be there from the state.
So if you look at page twenty-eight in the agenda to the, we reduced sixty-eight positions out of general fund and that was around four point one million dollars. And just so you know, we reduced about eighteen positions out of grant funding, different grants, four or five different grants. So we'll be able to utilize those dollars for some of the things, like in Title I, some school-wide type things. So that was the biggest reduction, but then there were things that we had to add. We had to change our funding source for around twelve of our pre-K classrooms. So we're funding twelve extras, so that means a teacher and an aide for twelve classrooms. We had special ed just continues to, our student growth in matters just continues to rise. And we've had to add many positions this year and the grant, we've had to shift some money from there back into the general fund and that was around half a million, so altogether, that was half a million.
Let me stop on that, Tasha.
Okay.
Just to kind of refresh everybody's memory about special education. Remember there was a federal lawsuit about Texas had, Texas had capped the amount of special education students that there were. Of course, TEA fought it. You fight the feds whenever they sue you, but, but the feds won. And so you wind up saying, okay, no more cap. But then the state turns around and doesn't fund you for that increase. So it truly was probably a, a, a funding governor, that cap was. But now you've seen this explosion in special education enrollment. Where were you at before that all happened, Dr. Hanson? Were we at six percent? And we're now at ten or eleven? We're at ten five, about to be eleven, so we're about to double the amount of special education students that we have with the same amount of funding. So that's why you're having to dedicate some of the operating dollars in there because there's not special education dollars coming from the feds or from the state in regard to that, it's, and so it's, it's tough.
Yeah, we've had an explosion of one-on-one aides and.
Yeah.
And I think we also remember that we're the biggest district with the most resources, so people live in Tyler.
That's true.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, and, and our strategies, we, we're taking a look at how, what our strategies are. You can't just throw thirty thousand dollars at a, at one single issue every time it happens, which is about the cost of an aide. And so that's something we've gotta do a better job at and I think we, we have put the brakes on that a little bit, but our numbers do keep going up because there is no, it's not as strenuous to, to become special education as it used to be.
A lot of it transferred in, it was one-on-one aides and then you have to watch.
Yeah, if they've already arted in, so they got arted in for that at Carthage. When they move here, we are, we have to have fidelity to that ard, to that ard document, that's federal law.
And so when we did the budget last year, we didn't, this has just been things we've added this year that I've kinda had to absorb, but I went ahead and added it for next year. I increased sub-expense to a hundred thousand, that's probably not enough, I'm not sure. We'll probably increase it a little more. And the transportation overtime, I need to increase because that just seems to be going up every year. And then the, one of the larger items is new cust-, or the new high schools, we need thirteen new custodians. That's around three hundred thousand dollars for thirteen. And that is based on square footage.
And those are not full-time positions, I mean, they are full-time positions, excuse me, but they're usually split in two, isn't that correct?
What do you mean?
Doesn't she hire, they, no, they ha-, they hire, people like to work part-time in those custodial positions.
Well, these are full.
These are all the full-timers, okay.
At the high schools, we
Yeah, okay.
up the level on them.
Okay, there you go.
So there were thirteen that we had to add, well, I think it ended up being twelve after we all said done six and six. I've changed it since then, but she told me she needed one less. And then I think our unemployment benefits will rise a little bit for next year based on what's happened. Let's see, what else? Our health insurance fund maximum, you know, we're self-funded. And our contract with Christos, it's going up, let me see here. Four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is, I think it's a ten percent increase, so that's what that is. So on payroll, we're reducing it around two point one net, two point one million net. And then if you'll turn the page for instruction and instructional support, I have the funds in here for the one-to-one devices. These are all one-time use things or one-time things. The band instruments, kilns, purchases, and then special projects and curriculum needs. Those are things that we have in there that we can remove the next year if we need to, or we can build it into the budget. That's kinda like school buses, I have seven hundred and fifty thousand built into the budget for replacement every year. And we've done that for like five years. But it's always there, that if we can't do it one year, that's funding. So now the one-to-one devices, we're gonna buy the ones y'all approved today this summer, so it's coming out of this year's budget, the new CARES Act funding. But this one point five million is, I think next year we have to replace three thousand, thirty-five hundred student devices because in every year, we'll need to replace some more because they're good for about four years. And then they'll roll off, and so I'm trying to build that into the budget. Hopefully it can stay. But what we tried to do were just the one-time items, because we don't know what's gonna happen the next year. Now, there are, like, there, the athletic official fees went up, fine art entry fees have increased. In addition, we're doing more fine arts events. And let's see, I have a reduction on Camp Tyler, moving it from an overnight to a day camp. And that saves around 212,000. And let's see. So altogether, the instruction and instructional support went up about 1.7 million. And then the other departmental budgets were just minor audit contract. Well, we had an increase in maintenance and custodial supplies for the new high schools. That's around 245,000. The tax assessment and collection fee goes up every year. We pay whatever their increase is. And then preventive maintenance fund, our three pennies, is going up 167,000. It's based on whatever the values are, three pennies of the tax rate. That'll change once we get our final values. So basically, we'll have a balanced budget. The, as he says, plug will be whatever we decide to do for retention stop-in. That's the one thing that we haven't ironed out yet. Now, there are some expenses that I've not been able to put in here yet because we're still waiting to get numbers. And that's the maintenance contracts, adding the extra devices, the 9,000 student devices and the teacher devices. We have to buy licenses and there's a lot of stuff, but it takes a while to get those quotes in. So there will be another increase in technology budget for that. And I'm just unsure yet what that is. But I think that's kind of the basics of it. Do y'all have any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Tasha, I have just one question, just to check my understanding, make sure I've kinda got all this. So tax rate currently going down through cost savings and eliminating personnel positions, if I'm looking at this right. We have right now a budget that's flat, essentially, within $54,000 with a future recommendation about retention pay possibly coming in. And then the other items that you just disclosed that are kind of a work in progress as we go through this. So do I have that, did I kind of get the big picture?
Yes, because our revenue is going up around $6 million. It'll probably be 5 by the time I get done, just guessing. So there'll probably be, if you look on page one of this, I don't know what, page 19 of the agenda. At the bottom, you know, usually I have this zeroed out. That's what I had left before, after I'd done everything. But that will probably go down to 5 million, I would say. I'm not sure. Until I get better values and re-figure the tax rate and all that type of thing and get the new technology items in here. So that would be either available for stop-in or to do anything else we might need to do that might be one-time because there could be some other things that come up. You just never know. But at least we're positioned, I feel like, for '21, '22.
But that cushion also, is there if there's a proration that occurs?
Right.
The unknown.
Because it's possible we'll have a proration.
The project that we embarked upon on the reorder, that's, yes, that's it. We knew that we needed some flexibility to expect the unexpected. And so if they wind up cutting us...
We'll be in...
That's probably what they'll cut us into, one. Then you guys start talking about this whole project over again after the 87th legislature. Hope not.
I do too, but I've been through it once.
And we've got other ideas. We could go get close to that other half if it was a 9 or 10 million dollar cut. But y'all know where all of our money is. And so it'd be another reorder type of deal.
I just want to applaud the fiscal conservatism of reducing expenses and being cautious about what you commit for the future. Just on the corporate side, I know dialing back compensation is super painful. And so to be conservative and cautious here while also recognizing we're in a competitive labor market. We want great teachers to get those successful student outcomes. But I just applaud the direction that you've pursued the last several months of making some painful expense reductions to prepare us for these tough times.
Now we're just gonna get the outcomes to match that.
Right.
Painful reduction, that'd be fun, squeezing that juice out of a lemon, so.
Okay, anybody have any other question? I'm sure we'll have questions down the road.
We'll have some more.
Especially on the shell game of, you know, financing setup that the state has. I have questions about that extra penny and all that. Anyway. But okay, thank you. Appreciate you. And we're gonna jump into executive session now. Do we have any action to follow?
No.
Doesn't look like we have any action to follow, so. Okay, we'll go into executive session.